The housing element.
Hi there. Good evening. I'm Kim Obstfeld with PMC. I was here for a study session not too long ago to talk about the housing element. Glad to be back. Thank you. We have, at this point, completed a draft housing element and we're here tonight to present it and hear your initial comments and feedback. We are looking at this point to take any comments, any suggestions from you and then from city council and then take the document to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, for their initial 60-day review. They'll give us then notes on whether or not they feel it is in compliance with statutes and with state law. So, a quick overview tonight. We did cover some of the components of the housing element during the last, during the study session. So, tonight, I'd like to just really focus on the regional housing needs allocation and the analysis that we performed there to show how we can accommodate that RENA figure and then also talk about key program changes, the big differences between your existing housing element and what we're looking at for the new planning period. So, just a quick recap on the, on the update process and where we're at with it. So, again, we started with the existing housing element, which has not been around for too long. It's a, it's a very current document, did what we needed to do, reviewed all of the policies and programs, took a look at the demographic data, took a look at changes that have happened as a result of your, changes to your planning regulations and your land use controls and developed a draft document. Throughout the course of that, we sought a community input and feedback and, and of course, developed a draft housing element, which you, which you have in your hands now. And again, we'll take that to HCD for their initial review, come back around, having revised the document to meet anything that HCD wants to see and present it again to you for final review and for adoption. After that, we'll go back to the state for certification review. And typically, unless there's any significant change that occurs as a result of the adoption hearings, it's really just a formality at that point. So, again, just a reminder on the schedule. We issued the public review draft or made it available to the public May 23rd. So, it's been on the street for a little over a month now. It was posted to the webpage and we sent out notifications to everyone on our stakeholder list and continuing to keep people informed. We have taken the complete draft to Housing Committee. It went before the committee on June 4th. Of course, we're here this evening and then we intend to take it to city council on July 15th. We're hoping to submit the draft to HCD as soon as possible after that meeting. I've been in close contact with HCD throughout and they're expecting sort of an onslaught of Bay Area housing elements toward late summer. So, we're hoping to kind of beat the rush there and, and stay on track for the streamlined review. We did have an informal meeting with Paul McDougal from the HCD. They had meetings at ABAG a couple of months ago, I guess two months ago, and got sort of the very informal thumbs up on some of the basics of our housing element, actually the pieces that we'll be talking about this evening. They were generally on board with our approach to meeting the RENA and took a quick review of our, our policies and programs and we're feeling like we were in, in good shape and on track. So, we don't anticipate any hiccups during the review. And again, we're eligible for streamlined review. So, I've been seeing that, the most recently come in at about 25 to 30 days. Again, it can take up to the full 60-day review period. So, we will probably see you for that October 2nd meeting, but it just depends on how the review process goes with HCD. Just a reminder on community input. Like I said, we, we've been maintaining a webpage. We've posted the draft document to the webpage. It's been there for a little over a month. That webpage has also featured presentations from all of the meetings and study sessions that we've done. And at one point, it had an online survey. It was available for a couple of months there. So, trying to, to be as transparent as possible during the update process. We also held a community workshop and that was done back in March. And then did a, a sit-down meeting with representatives from community organizations and nonprofit housing developers. We called it our Housing and Service Provider Roundtable in April. We've attended three Housing Committee meetings thus far and then did study sessions with the Planning Commission and the City Council. At this point, I'll, I'll start in on the regional housing needs allocation. And we talked a little bit about this at our last meeting, so I don't go into too much detail about the process. But again, HCD comes up with a statewide projection for the RENA planning period. And just as a note, the RENA period varies just a little bit from the housing element planning period, just to add a little bit of extra confusion to this document. It's actually for the 2014 to 2022 period, whereas the housing element planning period is from 2015 to 2023. So, if you see that, it's not a mistake. It's actually just one of those funky things. But it's determined on a statewide level and then pushed down to regional organizations. For us, that's ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments. They then work with cities and counties, come up with a methodology and push those numbers out to cities and counties within, within their realm. Our allocation for 2014 to 2022 was 1,498 units. And that, just a note, that is up a bit from our 2007 to 2014 allocation, which was 1,137 units. For most jurisdictions throughout the Bay Area, they saw actually a decrease. The, the ABAG wide number was lower, but there was a big push and the methodology this time focused heavily on creating that link between jobs and housing and focusing additional housing infill on, in PDAs. So, focusing heavily on priority development areas, which is why Emeryville ticked up a little bit on the allocation. The allocation is then further broken down into income categories. ABAG gives us numbers for very low, low, moderate and above moderate income projections. And then state law requires us to break that down further to include the extremely low income category. So, all told, the lower income categories make up about 33% of our allocation. So, in looking at the capacity to accommodate the RENA and, you know, just a caveat to this, it's showing capacity to accommodate the RENA is, is really a land use exercise. It's, it's not a mandate. We don't have to build these units. There's not an expectation that the city will in any way build these units. But we do need to show that if the market chooses to build these units and certainly will include programs to help facilitate affordable housing, but there's no, no requirement that we actually put these units on the ground. So, simply a land use exercise. So, we are able to show that in a couple of ways. We broke it down really into two categories. The first is projects that we already have in the works. So, projects that have already been through the planning process, who have approvals. And we also lumped in some projects that are almost there. So, you may have seen them once or twice, the Nady site, maybe other properties that aren't fully entitled, but they're far enough along in the process that we have a concrete program. We, we know how many units we can expect on the site and have an idea of whether or not there's going to be an affordable component. So, for example, sorry, did you want to jump in?
Well, just before you left that, I want to just clarify that the ABAG doesn't require that we build these, but isn't funding tied to meeting this goal? And also, are we vulnerable to lawsuits if we don't meet these projections?
No, not if you don't meet the projections. If you don't comply by showing that you can accommodate them, then that's when you start to, to see some trouble. You do need to report to the state on an annual basis where you're tracking and meeting these goals, but there's no penalty for not having met them. So, again, for plan and approve projects. So, again, a portion of these we know are going to be affordable units. So, for example, the 3706 San Pablo project, we're expecting a planning application or a full application later in the summer. But we do know, based on the process and what the project is, that there's going to be a strong affordability or exclusively affordable component there. So, we're, we're taking credit for those units. On the vacant and underutilized side is where it's a little bit more, more open. And I know it looks a little bit funky that we've shown such a large capacity on the lower income side with a smaller capacity on the moderate and above moderate, when we know in reality, the vast majority of the units that are produced are going to be affordable for those earning higher incomes in the moderate and above moderate. But because we're unable to project with any certainty where and how many affordable units are going to be produced over the course of, you know, the next eight years, the state came up with a default density standard. So, for jurisdictions and urban areas, it, the minimum default or the standard default density is 30 units per acre. So, they said at that, at that threshold level, it's feasible for an affordable housing developer to come in and, and get an affordable project done and on the ground. For jurisdictions like Emeryville, that 30 units per acre looks a little silly because that's, that's on the much lower end of your spectrum. But that does mean that we have this huge capacity that we can show of, of sites that meet that threshold. So, that's what we're talking about when we look at that vacant and underutilized number is how many sites meet state requirements to show that it's at the right density and with the right land use standards to, to make a project happen if one was brought forward. So, hopefully that, that makes enough sense. And then just to kind of give you a sense of where we're at. So, on this map, the, the darker red parcels are those properties that are highlighted in the dark red are those that are already underway. We have a development program. We, we have a pretty good sense of what that, that site is going to look like. The vacant and underutilized are those with the, the sort of hash there. And we've, we've reached pretty far. And, and we talked a little bit about this at the Housing Committee, that what is the real likelihood that the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center is going to redevelop as housing or Powell Street Plaza and some of these bigger sites. But the reality is that they are underutilized. If you look at the floor area ratio, if you look at those large surface parking lots and look at what your general plan envisioned for some of these sites, there's a real possibility that a developer could choose to undertake that project and that there would be a large housing component based on things that we've seen in the past. The marketplace redevelopment is an excellent example of, of the likelihood of those things continuing to get done. And as Emeryville kind of builds this out further and further, those are the, really going to be the only type of projects that, that are left and they're going to become more and more attractive. So, so again, it is, it is ambitious, but we do show a very, very large surplus. So, there's a lot of room in there. If certain things get done and other things don't get done, we're still showing an abundance of sites that are feasible and appropriate to meet the lower income RENA. Moving on to key program changes. So, again, we did a comprehensive review of policies and programs in the existing housing element and, and took a look at, at which programs and policies were appropriate to keep and maintain going forward, which ones needed to be modified and which ones we should just take off the table completely. A lot of the ones that were removed were completed. They just, they got done. You updated your planning regulations. You're in compliance with state law in terms of housing state law related to zoning. All of those things we can just kind of take out of the way. Others were deleted because they're no longer appropriate or they just weren't working. And, and we did make quite a few additions based on input from the community and, and from the Planning Commission and other groups that we, we encountered along the way. So, just a quick overview of these. Again, programs that were deleted because they were completed. You updated your density bonus ordinance. It's now in compliance with state law. Added regulations for secondary units. In your new regulations, you allow live work in light and industrial and mixed use zones. You completed your Senate Bill 2 compliance, which relates to zoning for emergency shelters, transitional housing and supportive housing. Did zoning for group homes and residential care facilities. Created or took care of a design review exemptions policy. Took care of your interim zoning classifications, which again, was just to bridge you between the new general plan and your updated planning regulations. Added bonuses for green building and put in an open space requirement for multifamily housing. There were five additional programs that were deleted because, just in discussions with staff and, and looking at what got done over the last planning period, they just didn't make sense. Others, like the use of redevelopment agency funds, simply removed because the redevelopment agency has been dissolved and it's no longer an option. Others, for example, the rehabilitation assistance, because a portion of that program or that piece of the program was funded through, or through redevelopment funds, it's now funded through CDBG or just no longer allowed activities under, based on our new funding source. So, there's a brief explanation of, of why those programs were deleted in your, in your staff report. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about those. Programs added. So, we did add quite a few programs. We added a program to monitor, based on state law actually, to monitor and work to retain at-risk units. Staff has been very proactive about, about that. We actually have to look at a 10-year period, just to add another date range to the housing element. We looked at 2015 to 2025, looking at affordable units that have been produced with HUD funds or low-income housing tax credits or some other funding mechanism that has a set period of affordability that may expire. We didn't find any, but we are aware that there may be some early after the 2025 date and staff is certainly on top of maintaining, maintaining that list and, and working in advance to retain those units. Continuing to offer a density bonus and looking at other potential regulatory incentives for affordable housing. The Housing Impact Fee and Housing Trust Fund, this is something that you are looking at later this evening. And depending on how that tracks with the housing element, we may be able to update that if it's already sort of done when we're ready to submit to the state. Otherwise, it's there as sort of a placeholder program until that does get done. Continuing to support state and regional efforts to establish funding sources for affordable housing. Always continuing to look for a replacement to that redevelopment agency money that was so important to affordable housing. We did include a program to look at the use of former redevelopment agency funds. Folks out there are calling them boomerang funds. So, any money that is coming back in, in terms of general tax revenue to the city that would have been sort of pushed into the redevelopment agency where a portion of that would have been used for affordable housing. Continuing to look at, as annual budgets are prepared, at using a portion of that money for affordable housing. Looking at the potential for a universal design requirement. Again, the code already allows for, encourages provision of, of universal design features in new homes, but looking at making a percentage of those, making a percentage of new units be required to have a universal design component. And again, this is just a study item. So, I think we left that one pretty open.
Okay, that was the one question I had after reading the whole report is can you explain to me what a universal design requirement is?
Sure, absolutely. So, universal design features are intended to allow a home to be livable for, for people at any stage of their life. And specifically looking at people who are seniors or people who are disabled. It's thinking about turn radiuses in bathrooms and in kitchens and allowing for wheelchairs to get in and out of rooms. So, perhaps wider door frames. It's reinforcing a bathroom wall so that if at some point you need to install a bar, the infrastructure is already there for you to put that in. So, it's, it's just thinking about little improvements that some, some little, I suppose, how you, what you call it little is, is relative, but improvements to a home or changes to a home that would just contemplate what changes might need to be made if someone did come across a circumstance in their life where they had less mobility.
And I'll just note, it is actually in the planning regulations currently that it's one of the bonus items. So, if you provide a certain amount of universal design units, you can count that towards a bonus, but it's not a requirement.
Right, right. And yeah, we put that in as a study item, realizing that we would want to consult with the development community and, and think that through before we actually establish a percentage and, and call that a requirement, but as a program, or work program for staff. Looking at opportunities for the potential use of city-owned sites or city-controlled sites for housing for disabled and/or developmentally disabled persons. Continuing to maintain and monitor the inventory of housing sites that are available. Again, something that HCD is looking to see. Advertising the availability of below-market rate units to school district, city and child development center employees. We did have some success in the last planning period. I think two below-market rate units were sold to school district teachers. So, thinking about how we can continue to, to get that program on their, within their realm. Promoting quality and diversity in architectural, in the, in the architecture of new housing. This is something that came out of our, our Housing Committee discussions. Continuing to move forward with those family-friendly design guidelines and continuing to evaluate opportunities for the use of city sites for affordable family housing. Promoting the availability of mortgage credit certificates. This is an existing program that's administered through Alameda County that can improve opportunities for lower and moderate income households to, to get into a home and, and experience homeownership. Providing education and technical assistance to HOAs primarily for the purpose of maintaining FHA eligibility. So, if, if buildings go over a certain percentage of units that become rentals rather than owner-occupied units, you can no longer get an FHA insured mortgage if you're buying a property or buying a home in that building, which can serve as a big barrier for folks getting in. Three and a half percent down payment is a lot easier to come up with than 20%. So, thinking about what that means for, for HOAs. Encouraging design features to prevent stormwater intrusion, another item that came out of our discussions with Housing Committee. Taking advantage of the fact that most of the city is a priority development area, continuing to look at new funding sources and, and leverage whatever opportunities may be out there to, to get new housing paid for or new planning paid for, based on the fact that we, we have such a significant area of the city as a PDA. Continuing to move forward with the eBots strategy and getting some of those recommendations implemented to improve that, that housing transit connection. And then looking to amend the city design guidelines to encourage community building features in multifamily housing. So, multipurpose rooms and mailboxes in locations that promote social interactions. And, and that's all I have for you tonight. Again, we're going to city council in July. Oh, gosh, does that say July 4th? I suppose no one will be there for that meeting. Sorry about that. That's an error. We're going on the 15th. And with that, I'm happy to hear your questions and comments.
So, I, I, I think that I understand the, the sort of default density discussion, but I just want to make sure. So, that, so the number of units for those, I, I think it was all of the sort of affordability levels were lumped together, isn't that, isn't that right?
Right. We sort of merged all those lower income levels together for purposes of that analysis.
So, that number of units was achieved by identifying the opportunity sites and then applying the, that density to those sites?
Yes. So, we looked at primarily, we, we pulled out of, basically, we looked at the whole inventory and then ended up pulling out a couple of sites that were smaller or had lower densities that, that didn't sort of seem to meet that threshold and, or may not be appropriate. And all the remaining sites that, most of them are larger sites and, and were well over that 30 units per acre. Those are all the realistic, well, we took the maximum allowable density or the maximum allowable units based on the existing density and then took 75% of that to allow for the fact that a lot of those are in mixed use areas and they may be subject to certain site constraints or just as, as kind of a factor to pull that down a little bit, knowing that not every site is going to achieve maximum capacity, even though we have examples showing that you can even go beyond based on a bonus.
Okay. So, the calculation, so the number of units then is actually calculated using the, sort of the maximum density, but a reduced maximum density.
Right. It's a percentage of the maximum density.
Okay.
Without the bonus.
And the default density then is just, is just the density that the, the state would sort of require that we have on those sites?
Right, exactly. So, anything over that and they're, they're more than happy.
I have a question.
Sure.
How, how, like on figure four point or four one, how is the designation of underutilized sites? How do you come up with the pool of underutilized sites?
Yeah. For, for purposes of this housing element, we kind of started with, with the inventory that staff put together last round where they really got out there and kind of went site by site and, and really kind of surveyed the city and, and looked for what might be available and what might be appropriate. And then we added a few to that list just based on things we saw in the general plan. So, we, we did end up adding, I don't think the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center was in the last housing element. But yeah, just looking at buildings that, or, or sites that are known by staff to, to have great potential. But again, this time, we didn't do the sort of like walk the streets, you know, go plot by plot, we just, just based on staff knowledge and an update of the, the existing.
I can, I can add a little bit to that. Just looking at this map, two of the big ones are the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center and the Powell Street Plaza, both of which are called for in the general plan to be developed at a much higher density than they currently are. In fact, there are specific general plan policies that call for that. So, sort of, I'd say the general plan kind of by definitions defines those as underutilized sites. Number 18 is Site B, which is very underutilized because it's just a big vacant lot right now. We don't know what's going to happen with that. Number 12 is BRE property, which we know they intend to develop at a higher use than what it is now, but they haven't come forward with anything yet. Number 18, I mean, number, am I reading that right? 19. 19 is the city-owned Christie Avenue properties, which we also intend to, in the not-too-distant future, put out an RFP for development of. And then the little parcels that are along San Pablo Avenue are actually identified, I believe, in the, what's it called? San Pablo Avenue Urban Design Guidelines or something like that. A document that was adopted by the redevelopment agency back in the 1990s. We still use it as a guiding document and it's actually referenced in the general plan. These are some of the smaller sites, Oaks Club Parking Lot, Bank of America Parking Lot, and some of the other similar sites along the Recreation Center site, which is now in portables, all of which are identified in that plan for higher density, mixed use development.
I have another question. On the, on the amenities map, there's a public facility that's shown sort of in the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center on the south side of 40th. Is that the, is that the community room that's in the, which map?
That's an excellent question. I actually don't know the answer to that offhand. I can flag it though.
What map number is that?
It's on page 4-9. It's figure 4.4-2.
You're saying public facility?
Yeah. So, it's purple. There's a little.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the community room.
Okay.
That's, it's, that's run by Community Services Department. Chamber of Commerce releases a portion of it from us for their offices and the rest of it is just an open, available community room.
I just have one question about the, one of the policies that is being removed or deleted. The policy 2B2 about Section 8 linked to homeownership. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Sure.
Because our low level of homeownership is one of my big concerns.
Yeah. And we, we talked about in, in depth about what to do with that one. Unfortunately, it's just not, not feasible is what staff was finding. Nobody had taken advantage of it. It just didn't work in previous years. The folks at the extremely low and very low income level that we're working with through the Section 8 program tend just not to be good candidates for homeownerships quite at the stage that they're seeing them at in those programs. So, no capacity to build up that, that down payment and this, it just didn't, it just wasn't penciling when we really sort of looked at whether or not that was a feasible option. Certainly, the idea is good and, and certainly, it's, it's a goal that everyone would want to see accomplished, but it just, on the ground, there, there had been no traction in actually making that happen.
But I would note that the notion of promoting homeownership has been elevated to a goal level now. So, and there is, there are several policies related and programs that are related to it, just not this one.
Is there, I couldn't remember. Is there a, a chart that talks about what the extremely low, the low, the moderate, the?
What that breakdown is?
What that breakdown is in dollars and where it comes from? I can't remember.
There's one in there. It's, it's based on HUD and HCD standards. And I can kind of just tell you the, the breakdown. And then there should be a chart. I can't remember exactly in the housing element, but it's, so extremely low is, did I have it in here? Extremely low is, well, I have the income ranges. I can show you that. And then I can talk to you about percentages. But it's calculated annually as a percentage of the area median income. And there we go. So, extremely low is at 30% or less of the area median income. Very low is in the 31 to 50% range. Low is in the 51 to 80% range. And moderate is 81 to 120%. And then above moderate, of course, is anything over 120.
And those numbers change based on the number of people in the family too.
Right, exactly, exactly. Thank you. That, that's, these actual income ranges are based on a four-person household. HCD produces an income limits report every year and it shows from households in sizes from one to eight, the number fluctuates across the board. But those percentages always, always stay at that level.
Thanks. I'm just wondering on, on table 4-1, this is on page 4-2, is this, is the state looking at the total units? Because when I look at that, I see that we're, we have planned or approved more units than, than the RENA. the RENA out, you know, projects as the demand, or, but then when I look at extremely low all the way through moderate, we're only, we have only got planned or approved about one-fifth of the projection.
Right, absolutely.
And so, do they look at that as a, as a, as a shortcoming?
Actually, Paul from HCD, when we looked at this, he was like, "Oh great, you already have affordable units coming." And, you know, in terms of the total, they tend not to, they tend not to care much about the above moderate and moderate income side unless they're just seeing you never build housing. And I think Emeryville, with Emeryville's track record of getting lots of units on the ground, and specifically with getting affordable units on the ground, they come into it with a little bit of a different eye. You know, they're, they're a lot more willing to hear kind of where you're at and where you're going, and I think compared to a lot of other jurisdictions that we're working with and around, having the number that we do in process already is better than most. It's not where we would want to be, but it is, it's, we're still in pretty good shape going into the planning cycle.
I really like the fact that this is, we're made to do this, because I think it's, it's important that, to keep it in top of mind and to have it out there, so I'm very appreciative. And I really, I also am happy to see a lot of the added programs that seem to bring things forward to where we need to be like universal design and, yeah, so that was, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
I just want to commend you all for your job well done, everyone involved has done a lot of good work. It's been a long process, it's been well thought out, and I think everyone's done a good job.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I just, I have one other question, just about, a couple of the tables about household by income categories, there, is there, do you have a breakdown for the extremely low too? Because the tables start at very low.
It just depends on the data source, so ACS, a lot of, a lot of the data for this housing element came from the American Community Survey, and they tend to only go to that very low income level, so we don't have great numbers for extremely low. Let me see if I can find an example. We have one section in the needs assessment that speaks specifically to extremely low.
Yeah, I saw that later on and that's why I was wondering why it wasn't in the earlier tables, so that's okay.
Just limited, got it, so 221 and some of those, yeah, just limited by the data that's available to us unfortunately.
Well, I also think that this is really thorough and really well done, and I really appreciate the addition of the policies for ownership and family-friendly and diversity of housing stock and universal design and all those things.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I would just echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioners and say, "Well done," and it's, I like the, I really like the organization of the element and it's, you know, it's shockingly like, easy to read, we just sat down to read it, so.
Great, thank you.
So I don't, are we voting on this, or are we just giving comments?
Well, yes and no, we don't have a resolution before you, because this is a draft report, it's not the final report, however, we do need a vote on a motion to approve this for forwarding to the City Council.
I would move that way forward.
I do have some comments that I'd like to make, if that's possible. There were a couple added programs that seemed like they were, I'm guessing probably came from one person, and they, one of them seemed out of place and the other, actually, they both seemed a little bit out of place, in, I think it's H426, this was one where...
Architectural diversity?
Yeah, so basically, it seemed like someone who had a penchant for more traditional architecture was trying to utilize the need to promote communities for affordable housing to sort of slip in some, a goal of promoting quality of diversity in architectural style of new housing developments. So it's basically creating a goal to amend the city design guidelines to encourage, wait, am I reading the right one? Oh yeah, to encourage eaves and gabled roofs, which I'm not sure how that fits in to the overall goal, and it seems like it's just a design preference of an individual or small group of people, and it actually seems contradictory to a lot of the character of Emeryville. And I actually did, I saw similar, similar added goal under 7.2.5.
What page are you on?
These are the, 7.2.5 is page 6-14, and then this one is, you know, in order to discourage water intrusion, they, or stormwater intrusion, the use of gabled roofs, eaves, stoops, awnings, recessed windows, lentils over doors or windows, or protruding window frames, and, I mean, I would, I've seen gabled roofs that, that leak like a sieve, and I've seen flat roofs that you could fill up with water and swim in it, and it doesn't leak at all.
I'm not sure how recessed windows or stoops or, you know, those things address that either.
Yeah, I mean, I think there, it's, they could all be done without any of those, and so they're, they really just seem as, they're design preferences, so I'd like to see both H426 and H725 removed.
Would you need to remove the whole thing or just specific language? And can you speak to that? Can you tell us where that came from to be so specific?
Sure, yeah, I mean, it did, it did come out of conversations with the Housing Committee primarily. There was a lot of discussion about the city's existing housing stock, and a lot of it came out of the fact that there have been so many problems with the new condominiums and new rental developments, some of those large-scale projects that so many have had to be tented over the years, and thinking about why that's happened and how we can present, prevent that in the future, those conversations kind of came around to, you know, are there pieces of the design that are leaving these buildings more open to water intrusion issues or problems? And is that something that we can do something about or rethink in our design guidelines? And similarly, the diversity in architectural styles came out of discussions with Housing Committee, just thinking about, you know, the feel of the community and the character of the community and the prevalence of sort of modern design and wanting to see a little bit more diversity, and certainly those are, there's...
They want to see diversity by adding what we've had in the past.
There's no, there's certainly no HCD requirement to address any of those items, so that's purely about community sentiment and whether or not you feel that's appropriate and if that's something you want to include as a policy, it's strictly about judgment, but those did come out of Housing Committee meetings.
I really appreciate you noticing that, I didn't notice that, and it definitely, now that you specify that, and I think we are building things, I mean, I think Oakwalk isn't contemporary by its terms of flat roofs and et cetera, but I think specifying that in this is a problem. And I think now we're changing design guidelines and we're not doing anything with the housing element here.
Well, it's a goal, it's not specifying, but I think that promoting quality and diversity...
Yes. Yes, that's what I'm saying, some language but not the whole thing.
Having specific language that seems to be encouraging more traditional architecture, when that's...
Or just specifics in architecture.
I agree, good catch, and, yeah, it does seem silly, and I would support just sort of striking the language about the specific architectural features, but I think especially promoting, you know, diversity in architectural style is a worthy goal.
Yes.
And I guess, what was the other one?
Preventing future stormwater intrusion.
I mean, that's... You would hope they would do that naturally.
Right, I mean, it's just, it should say, enforce the building code so that, you know, to prevent future...
Are we getting...
Yeah, the likelihood of lawsuits pretty much prevents them to do that more than we're going to. So those were two items that, I mean, I'd prefer seeing modified to get rid of some of the specific language.
May I suggest that if this is, I'm getting the sense that this is the sense of the commission, for H426, you just strike the second sentence, and for H725, you strike everything after the first comma, after the word intrusion.
Yes.
That makes sense.
And then, I'm...
Maybe features and material quality or something like that for this, the one about stormwater.
Mm-hmm. Features and...
Quality materials or...
Quality materials.
Something like, something along those lines.
I'm really biting my tongue to say forbid stucco.
We have other elected and appointed officials who would like to forbid corrugated metal.
Yes. We all have our opinions, doesn't mean that's not the law.
Don't be in your choices of building materials.
So I did have a few more comments, and I don't, it's all sort of in the goals category. One, you know, one of them, and I think I may be the odd man out on this one, but the, we're looking at the underutilized sites, and I know we all sort of appreciate the light industrial, or industrial heritage of Emeryville, but the reality is that light industrial buildings, or buildings utilized for light industrial purposes, don't employ many people per square foot, and they take up a lot of space, and that's why when I look at the underutilized site map, I mean, when I go around Emeryville, I see half of Emeryville underutilized, and, you know, I know there's been, I think there's been a change to allow the use, allow mixed-use development in light industrial zones or areas.
No.
No?
Well, not residential.
Oh, okay, okay.
Used to be, but not now, not under the new planning regulations.
But, I mean, this was one I'm throwing out there and I may get shot down for it, but, I mean, I'd like to see, I mean, because the goals here, I mean, these are actually goals that are going to be established that will encourage changes in the general plan, and, you know, some of these goals are actually worded in those terms to amend or adopt and implement amendments to the city design review guidelines, et cetera, and so it's just a thought that one might be to encourage modification of the general plan to recognize more opportunities for residential development in areas currently occupied by light industrial use.
If I could bring that, that, well, that was a very big, big conversation during the general plan process, and that was really vetted out that that was a protect and preserve, and I think George Martin would come in here and talk to the contrary to that, because his business is a lot of those buildings, especially on, what, 67th Street, and he's actually adding more just on the Berkeley side to his, and I think also, I don't know whatever happened to the Coffee Company for North Carolina that was looking at one of the spaces...
They just came in for building permit.
That we approved when I think I first came on here, so I think it's important for a city to keep, especially if we want to maintain a mixed-use type of city, those are areas that people really probably don't want to live in, and I don't think are really appropriate, especially as long as Coulter Steel and Forge is still there, and I think these are vile businesses, they may not employ what Navartis employs, or what Pixar employs, but they still offer, and we keep going around and around about local businesses, local serving communities, smaller jobs, so I think it's very important to keep, and we're talking two blocks, three blocks of the northern part of the city, so, as you said, I mean, I can speak only for myself, and I was in that conversation during the general plan processes, that we need to save that, and I, and I mean, you read about San Francisco trying to save their industrial, that people starting small t-shirt businesses have nowhere to go, and I think we need to provide that and have that available.
And I'll just add too, that as part of the general plan, this element does have to be consistent, you know, internally consistent with the other elements of the general plan, HCD sort of requires that especially, and so it would, we would have to amend the, at least the land use element in order to allow that, so it's not, it's not something that could be done just as part of this discussion, it would have to be part of a...
Well, I don't, I mean, there's a lot in here that wouldn't be done just as part of this discussion, but it does encourage, or, you know, it does encourage the city, the staff, to, you know, to look into making these changes, and so, I knew that was a losing battle, but it's just one I wanted to throw out there, there are other, but there are other components, I mean, the one thing that I think about is, you know, I've, I even heard during the meeting today that the City Council already felt like the list of protected structures was too large, but I remember, I mean, when I first looked at the general plan and saw that the historic district was limited to this sort of small area, and I go around town and I see lots of buildings that I, you know, I feel are of equal historic significance to the ones that are protected, that aren't protected, and I'd love to see the increase in that, you know, in that, and that would fall under, under the, I think it's the, what is it, 74, which is the preservation reuse of existing buildings, basically reducing carbon footprint, that kind of thing, so that's one I wanted to throw out there, I mean...
And you could, you could argue that having, taking away the light industrial would increase our carbon footprint, because all these businesses that are here that are local serving are going to have to go far, far away, and here we are, you know...
That's where, with the light industrial, I feel like, they, if they became mixed-use with residential or mixed-use commercial, and that they would employ more people and more, and support more local business than they do now, I mean, I, when I walk through there, there seems like there are, you know, there aren't many people per square foot, taco trucks pull up to serve them, and I don't think they're supporting a lot of the local businesses and they're, they're not employing many people per square feet, so I think, I think other uses could, I think it's a character thing, I can see the, you know, the desire to maintain it, at least in a small portion of the town, I think it's pretty unlikely, you know, 40 years down the road that they'll be there, but that's, I think that's just natural, what's, you know, what's likely to happen, but...
Well, I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of this housing element to the City Council with the, with the modifications that we discussed.
I actually have a couple more modifications to...
Chair, before you entertain a motion, could I ask that you open the public hearing, please? Thank you.
Does anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Close the public hearing?
Thank you.
Go back to our discussion.
So, the, I guess the one that I, the one I think, I threw out a couple controversial ones, but there was one, there's one item that I think maybe we might be able to find some agreement on adding some goals to, and I think somebody already started down this path with the, which one is it, 7.733, where they're, you know, and this is all about encouraging developments to, to have, you know, strong interface with streets and also inclusion of social spaces, and the, talking about the large, that the larger residential development, you know, projects have, you know, mailbox locations that encourage social interaction and that they have multipurpose rooms, I think that's a great, a great addition. And I'd actually like to add a few items to, maybe it's to that item, or 734, I would like to see the encouragement of street-level porches and, not just stoops, but porches in developments of all sizes when possible. I'd like to see the encouragement of courtyard-level porches and patios when feasible, and I'd like to see, you know, community open space amenities that encourage community interaction among adults and children. I think a lot of times we get the amenities that come before us are poorly thought out or they're not even thought out at all, and, and to actually have that encourage, you know, amenities that are going to... And, and to actually have that encourage, you know, amenities that are going, going to reinforce a sense of community and be useful. And also encouraging a visual connectivity of primary circulation routes and open spaces and courtyards. And encouraging the kitchens and not so much bedrooms look out onto the courtyards. Or even if the bedrooms do, at least the kitchens do. And I like, one thing I noticed, part of the Parkside project, is their, the courtyards, and one of the reasons I resist the idea of having a building go where the parking lot is, is they've got two main courtyards, and they both, one of them even walks down to the park level, and they both open to the park. And so I think, I like that idea. I like the idea of courtyards opening, being visually, visually connected to the public street, and encouraging that as a goal. You know, and I could get even more specific, things like encouraging visual connection between the community room and the community open space. Encouraging shared community slash general public amenities. You know, encouraging required commercial and retail and mixed-use to accommodate the needs of residents and the adjacent neighbors. And encouraging glazing on unit entry doors, even if it's obscured. I don't know.
In that, in that respect, I see what you're saying, and I have some comments to make overall. But in the, the glazing part, for me, it becomes a security issue.
Yeah.
With, you know, I think if they have windows and stuff that face out, I think, you know, for someone's front door, I think for my personal taste, I'd like something a little bit more secure than a glass door.
We can see that at elevation 22.
Right.
Which has little front stoops for every unit.
But they're little.
And these doors and windows right on the street, and the curtains are pulled at all time.
On every unit.
And I've never seen a person sitting on the front stoop looking there.
And it's city limits. It's the same thing.
Yeah. So it's, it's just a question, I like a lot of what you said. I think a lot of it is too specific for something like this. But how about some language? Because I really agree with what you're saying, and I think talking about the Nadye site, we've kind of started to pull out a lot of this stuff. But how about saying something that says, "Design elements within the public open space or realm that encourages social interaction and share amenities with the general public."
I like that. And, and maybe encourage design of private units to engage the, engage public streets as much, you know, when, when feasible or something along those. I mean, the reality is, like, E22, they're throwaway rooms. They're, you go into the garages, you don't go into those rooms.
Yeah, it's an office.
Yeah, so, so they're...
But elevate, where you live, on the back side, they have units on the ground floor, and the curtains are pulled at all times.
Yeah, no, this is, this is one, whoever solves this problem will become a millionaire. Because this is, I've never been able to solve this problem.
Well, I think, I think one of the big, one, I mean, one thing that helps solve that problem is to have a buffer zone, a sort of in-between space that semi, that, like a porch, and a stoop doesn't do it. A porch feels like a transitional zone between the private and the public, and a space where you could go out, you could have your things out there, maybe things you don't care if they get stolen or whatever, or some couch or something. But it, it acts as that transition. If you don't have that transition, if you just have a stoop or, you know, windows straight out to the public street, your blinds are going to be closed. You're, you're not going to spend time out there.
Yeah, I think what you need is wider sidewalks, planting areas, and then the building. And I think maybe that's part of our job, that we start asking the developers to provide those spaces. Because Artist Walk is a prime example as well. San Pablo Avenue, my God, it's like a fortress. And there's just the stoops in the street practically, and no one is going to engage in those areas at all because they're really unfriendly. And I walk by there a lot thinking, "These are really cool, but they're just very cold and stark." And it almost seems like I want to create a fortress. And I think what we need to do is create something that's a little bit more inviting to where people open their windows to see something other than the cars passing by.
I use that project as an example of a, of a bad example of that all the time.
Yeah. I like the, the architecture of that building. I think it's one of the betters of that typical three-story townhouse kind of thing. But its interface with the street is just foreboding.
Yeah.
I think that it's really, would be valuable to put in your, the goals that you're trying to do in general language, something along the lines of what Stephen was saying, but without getting completely specific about a kitchen facing a courtyard and that kind of stuff. So I would support that.
Don't we have it in here somewhere already to sort of establish design guidelines for family-friendly, multi fam, so, is, I, to me, I think that incorporates a lot. I think when, the manifestation of that will incorporate a lot of the things that you're talking about.
But I mean, we've, there are already goals in here as specific as mailboxes and, and, you know, and community rooms. So, I mean, could we add a goal similar to the one that Stephen brought up? And, and maybe even have an element of it that's also addresses private unit engagement of, of common areas and public spaces?
I think the way you said that was fine.
And just adding, you know, maybe adding the mailroom and the multiperson, as examples, by example, mailrooms, community rooms, stuff like that. Just to kind of give someone, you know, a breadcrumb.
I don't think there's anything wrong with giving the examples. Because it's, yeah.
Yeah. Just maybe create a laundry list of examples of what they might do. It may not be in every development that they do those things, but here's some ideas of ways you can create this engagement. I think the affordable housing things that we toured, did a lot of that, the laundry rooms, you know, did a lot of that of, you know, the parents could be doing laundry while the kids are out playing in the yard right outside the doorway.
Well, nowadays, all new apartments have washing machines in each unit. That's standard now.
I think Kim might have an idea for us.
Yeah, I just, so just wanted to clarify. So then we'll open up the, kind of the primary language of seven-three-three to be slightly more general, and then add sort of a list of, like, for examples, and include some of those pieces that are already there. And then looking at general open space and a little bit on the private features as well. And then just to, to sort of reinforce, so these programs, this is a piece of the general plan. So it's gonna, a piece of this is going to get done through, through future work, a piece of it's going to get done through the family-friendly design guidelines that are, that are in progress. Those will be coming your way pretty shortly, as I understand it. And then a portion of this is that these general plan pieces are used as a, as a gauge point for you. So as projects come forward, and as staff is, is looking through the general plan and looking at, at policies that you've put in place, and policies that you've agreed make sense for your community, they're meant to be a benchmark for you. So just to kind of circle back on purpose.
Just seems, when the opportunity exists to plant seeds, that, why not try?
Sure, sure.
Did you have more?
No.
In that case, I would move that we recommend this for, that it be forwarded by city council to the HCD.
With, with the amendment to the...
With those change, with those amendments.
So that was to H426, H725, and H733.
Yes.
So that was moved by Commissioner Donaldson and seconded by Vice Chair Moss. Ready to vote?
But not the one about the, the light industrial.
I don't think that got a second.
Okay.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gunkel?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Kummerly?
Aye.
Vice Chair Moss?
Aye.
And Chair Cardozo?
Aye.
Six ayes, the motion is approved. We will forward your recommendation to the city council.